Certainly. Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles. Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, would you mind saying a word, please?
As my head. Creator for all the things that you've done for us, for the accomplishments that we've dreamed about and have the courage to stand for. We thank you for this day and the blessings you bestowed upon each of us. Bless this assemblage today and those who sit around this table. Sensitize us to your will and yet to your way. Touch us and remind us that we are your children. We ask it, reclaim it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, at this time, we would ask for you and council to adopt the agenda with the following amendment. We would ask that you defer item 19, a zoning map amendment for 5,300 Ret Street, TMS number 117011003.
Is there a motion to adopt this?
Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles. Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Moving into a period of public input, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council about items on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time. Mr. Mayor and council, I would add, just due to the volume of tonight's agenda, and of course, many of the items, we know there is much interest. I do ask the public to exercise decorum and respect of others, also taking into account that we're being conscious of time so that all have the opportunity to speak who would like to speak. But I would respectfully request no applause, cheers, et cetera.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Dr. Bustles is attempting to join the meeting, so she should be with us shortly.
Okay, great.
All right, we will start.
I just want to confirm. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll reiterate that speakers have three minutes. There is a timer. You will receive a 30-second warning at which time you are asked to wrap up your comments. We will start the public input with Ms. Arianna Ford, and she's here to speak on the conversion therapy ordinance.
Hi, my name's Arianna Ford. I live in the Arcadia Lakes area. Today in my speech, not only will I be referencing the repeal on conversion therapy, but I will also be referencing the 2024-2025 approved budget and how $3.7 million lost will not affect the city, while also making it known regardless of any political parties or religious leaders' power, queer youth deserve to be protected. The projected growth for 2024/2025 is to be $188,781,113, give or take. Is that correct?
Ma'am, we would ask that you just continue with your comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My fellow peers, do you know $2.5 million of your dollars went towards AI devices used to review police body cam footage last year? AI is trained off human bias, proven time and time again to use racist language, ambiguous rhetoric, by not only Chaitman University, but also by the National Education Association. Do you want a robot to review potential cases of police misconduct? Moreover, we all know that Sheriff Leon bought him and his department 17 Ford Mustangs that totaled to $282,030 excluding sales taxes. His excuse: community building. As if children and adults of marginalized oppressed communities feel safer or more connected with comps flaunting their wealth. Many Colombians live paycheck to paycheck, driving beater cars because public transportation isn't prioritized. If we are so concerned with children growing well, that doesn't explain the communities of black and brown children walking up and down dangerous roads because the city won't add sidewalks. If we... Because the city won't add sidewalks in the Arcadia Lakes, Dinsville, and some parts of Forest Acres. Mayor, your salary last year was $852,150, when most family homes in Columbia make $55,653 annually. We do have funds to allocate from if there is a $3.7 million cut. We also have enough revenue sources, like the increased parking meter costs, that keep lower-income residents from being downtown. So I'm asking, is it really the money we are worried about? Is it because some of y'all don't care for queer youth? Are you more worried about your salary? Is your religion the only moral compass you have when your God gives you free will? Are you grasping the times we are in right now? If political leaders refuse to protect us at our most vulnerable times, we, the people, have to protect our vulnerable. If your political powers are so limited, you should become one of us. Queer youth deserve existence, acceptance in a community willing to stand up for what's right regardless of money.
Dr. Deborah Leverett.
Mr. Mayor, may I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe your salary is $852,000.
I was asking where it was, because I certainly hadn't seen it.
No, ma'am. We, and I just, for the public's verification, there's, that's absolutely not factual, nor does the city fund the sheriff of Richland County or the sidewalks in Forest Acres. But just for the sake of clarity for the public, none of that is in the city's budget.
Yes, ma'am. It's your turn.
Aye. My name is Deborah Leverett, and I'm a medical doctor who specializes in psychiatry. I appreciate being here today with you, sharing my thoughts about conversion therapy. First, as it directly related, as it is directly related to what I'm here to speak with you about, I'd like to share with you some of my background, my education, my many years of work experience. I was born and raised in Columbia, South Carolina. I attended the Medical University of South Carolina, where I obtained an MD degree. Then I did a three-year residency in general psychiatry at the William S. Hall Psychiatric Institute. Hall Institute is now a part of the University of South Carolina School of Medicine. After residency, I did an 18-month fellowship in community psychiatry, and during that time, I obtained my master's degree in public health administration. Finally, after serving as acting training director of Hall Institute and head of the community psychiatry program there, as well as seeing individual patients and conducting group therapy with residents and patients, I decided to pursue training to become a psychoanalyst. For that, I attended the Psychoanalytic Institute of the Carolinas at Duke for four years. I continue to see patients in my private practice office here in Columbia. I'm here today to address a practice that continues to harm LGBTQ+ individuals despite overwhelming evidence against it. This is the practice of conversion therapy. This practice rooted in outdated beliefs and misconceptions about sexual orientation has been widely discredited by medical and psychological professionals. Yet it continues to persist in various forms while causing profound harm to those who undergo it. Conversion therapy, often cloaked in the guise of treatment, aims to change an individual's sexual orientation from homosexual or bisexual to heterosexual. These practices can include religious rituals, questionable sexual counseling, and even aversive therapy. They often rely on manipulation, coercion, and lack of informed consent. Many individuals, particularly young individuals, are pressured into these programs by family members or societal expectations. They are led to believe that their sexual orientation is a flaw that needs fixing. This, however, can lead to a lifetime of internal conflict and shame. Despite being ineffective, this approach is also fundamentally harmful. It has been consistently linked to severe negative mental health outcomes. Research at Stanford has demonstrated clear connections between conversion practices and increased symptoms of depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and suicidality. It is worth noting that in 1973, more than 50 years ago, the American Psychiatric Association removed homosexuality from its Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorder, recognizing that same-sex attraction is a normal variant of human sexuality, not a disorder requiring treatment. Yet decades later, these harmful practices continue.
You, PJ Whitehurst.
Good afternoon. You know the right thing to do here today. We know that this is a political statement. We know that two people not in this room today who have already bent the knee to their king are running for reelection. We know that you are being threatened, and it's not right. But at the end of the day, what matters most to the people of Columbia has nothing to do with LGBTQ+ people. We will not be your political pawns. You said that there wasn't enough statistics, even though, as we all know, everything, especially abuse, is underreported. And if you don't know, I invite you to come to work with us. I invite you to stay up on the phone countless nights to try to de-escalate situations, to be a voice of reason, or to just be someone to talk to, because sometimes you don't know if that's going to be the last conversation. So the question is, do you listen to the bullies, or do you become them? The vote you make today shows how you will make votes in the future. It sets a precedent that our Attorney General, our Governor, and our President can threaten those they do not agree with, and you will bend the knee. We know that this is a hard decision, especially when there is money involved. We know that our history is filled with good old boys who will do nothing for power and money and prey on those who are vulnerable. But as a person who was born here and raised here, created friendships, had amazing jobs, and enjoyed the beauties of our states and our communities, this is not who South Carolina is. So do you stand up to the bullies, or do you become them? Because the next time that you're at church on Sunday or you're praying here, the question that I have is, are you praying for forgiveness? Or are you praying and thanking God for guiding you to make the right decision because what Christianity actually stands for? The tables will be turned, just as Jesus flipped the tables on the greedy tax collectors in front of God's temple. Don't bend the knee. Don't be the bully. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Michael Watson.
Council, Mayor, and City Manager, thank you. Again, I want to repeat something I've said before. I appreciate the fact that this ordinance exists in the first place. I thank you for having done that, even if you weren't here when that happened. As a body, you represent that right now, and I thank you for that. I also want to say that I do believe it's most prudent that nothing be decided until the Supreme Court does so. I don't think it's prudent on your behalf. I don't think it's prudent from state, any level. I think that's going to be decided, and there's no real reason other than the financial reason that's put upon you to make a decision before that's done, because that's going to decide whether what Attorney General Wilson said is actually legal or not. He says he thinks it may be illegal, but he can't say that for sure. I also want to offer something of maybe another solution. And I do this because I know I don't particularly want to be standing up here in front of you. I'm not a public speaker, full of nerves. Most of the people you hear here are full of nerves about speaking in front of you about this. When a situation like this comes up, it's fearful for these people. It's fearful for this community of minority, of marginalized people. They're here because they feel like they have to be. So my solution that I think I can offer to you is, and there's a blueprint for it already, is that we work together to prevent what may be coming down the road. Because I don't think this is going to be the last time that this community is going to have to stand here in front of you. And I don't think you want to be doing this. I think you would much rather not be addressing this issue to begin with. So I think it would be smart to do what the Conference of Mayors has done. They did a survey of 120 cities across the country, and about 83 of them responded with what they're doing to build a more inclusive city. And I think one of the things in that, that a lot of the cities responded with, was creating a commission so that you have people from this marginalized community represented and can give you all some help in matters such as what's before us now. I think that and just reviewing the responses from that survey, it's, I believe the, let me see if I've got this here. The document is called "Building a More Inclusive City." And if you review that document, I think you'll find ways that you can use this community to help you not have to be in this situation anymore. And I think you're going to find very willing people, and you're going to take some of the fear out of this community when things come up. So I suggest to you, maybe we review that and possibly have that as a solution. Thank you.
Jace Woodrum.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I am before you embodying two roles today. First, I am the Executive Director of the ACLU of South Carolina. Second, I am a transgender man living in Councilman Brennan's district and the parent of a child who is actively exploring their sexual orientation and gender identity. As the Executive Director of the ACLU of South Carolina, I urge you to resist giving in to state officials who are pressuring you and extorting you in the name of free speech. The ACLU is an organization known for its principled defense of the First Amendment, and I will tell you again that this law does not infringe upon free speech. It regulates the provision of healthcare by prohibiting pseudoscientific and abusive practices. Courts across the country have upheld similar regulations. The threats made by the Attorney General are nothing more than playing politics with the lives of vulnerable children. And the AG isn't the only one playing politics. State lawmakers have chosen to punish Columbia by pulling millions of dollars from the state funding, forcing you to consider balancing the budget on the backs of kids. But perspective matters. The funding at issue represents less than 0.8% of the city's total budget. Columbia's kids need you to be the leaders who refuse to play politics with their... My kid is one of those kids who needs you. My almost 10-year-old. Often challenging journey of understanding oneself. Now, I adopted my child from foster care, and because of the trauma that was part of their earliest days, I have often relied on therapy. Time and time again, I've sought out trained professionals to help my kid with understanding adoption. Loss of a beloved grandparent. The next time I seek out therapeutic support for my child, I expect it to be focused on helping them understand their identity. Puberty is terrifyingly right around the corner. And the differences between humans, differences like sexual orientation and gender identity, are coming into clearer view. And to be frank, with a transgender dad who spends his day job doing things like this, I expect my kiddo is going to have a lot of questions and need plenty of support. When I seek out that next therapist, I want to know that my city has protected us from so-called conversion therapy, that my professionals from peddling psychological snake oil that harms, not helps, and that my city chose not to play politics with the lives of the children who depend on us to keep... Thank you.
Elaine Cooper.
Hello, my name is Elaine Cooper, and I live on Daleos Road. I am a Columbia City resident. Actually, been a Columbia City resident for at least 40 years. Also, I am a proud legal woman voter member, and I support the Columbia Group and their official letter sent to y'all. Have you read it? Okay, that's awesome. Taking a stand to not repeal the ban on conversion therapy. The last time I checked, our mayor and city council members were elected by the tax-paying voters of Columbia. Are we still going to hold elections? Or are we going to be dictated to by our Attorney General who is considering running for governor? I like to know, you know, as a Columbia City resident and a voter. With that said, I hope and I pray that home rule still stands. Thanks.
Elliot Nadell.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Elliot Nadell. I'm 18 years old, and I've been a resident of Columbia, South Carolina, for the last four and a half years. And I'll be attending USC in the fall. I'm also a transgender man. I'd like to start by saying that I don't believe any of you are bad people. I attended the last meeting on the topic of this ordinance, and I saw nothing that indicated that any of you believe in conversion therapy or were acting out of homophobia or hatred for my community. In fact, I saw significant evidence that you care for your constituents and your city deeply. That being said, I also don't think you are in a position to understand what the world looks like to LGBTQ people right now, and especially transgender people. Allow me to put it this way. Nationwide, 41% of transgender youth seriously considered suicide. In the last year, in South Carolina, that number spikes to 58%. Nearly 6 out of 10 transgender youth in your state seriously considered suicide. This ordinance may not seem meaningful or valuable to you, but my community is under attack. Think of it like a wall. It, it, sorry, I've lost my place. Think of it like a wall. Things like legal gender market changes, Obergefell versus Hodges, access to healthcare, and this ordinance represent a brick in that wall. It might not seem like a big deal to you, but to us, each brick removed makes the next one easier, makes the legislators bolder, and makes my community that much easier to reach by those who want to hurt us. In the last six months, we have seen this wall systematically dismantled on a national and state level. If this issue came at any other time, I might agree with you that it would be harmless to undo this ordinance. But right now, I can't see it as anything other than the latest in a series of targeted attacks framed as a necessary budget issue. $3.7 million, as has been said, is less than 1% of the city's budget for the next year. It might not be you, but there are people in this country who want me dead for existing. Rome wasn't built in a day, but neither was Hitler's Germany. I am asking you to uphold this ordinance because some of us, for some of us, it might mean life or death. And I think that if even the thought that this city has some measure of care gives one LGBTQ child enough hope to keep living, it's worth it, don't you? Thank you.
Irene Bearwald.
Again, I would remind our audience to respectfully not applaud or cheer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Irene Bearwald, and I am still a resident of Lexington. They say that the third time is the charm, so here we go again. People have attempted to sway your opinion with emotional testimonies. People have attempted to sway your opinion with factual data from multiple reputable organizations that have done research on the validity of conversion therapy and express that the practice is only to be shown to be harmful to individuals. But let's be honest, it's about money. So this is a question about how to explain to non-queer constituents why they must make do with less resources just so that a ban that has nothing to do with them remains intact. How many of those constituents or politicians support the current administration in power? If they do, was it not their administration that stated that instead of getting $30 this year for Christmas, kids are just going to have to be okay with getting one? If that is the tone of the administration that they rally behind, why would they be expecting any different of a situation for themselves? If the administration that they rally behind demands less government overreach, why would they be okay with literal government overreach? The people believed that this ban, no matter how toothless it is, was important enough to put it in place the first time. Why allow a larger government entity to tell you that your population doesn't know what is good for them? This past weekend was a great illustration of the response your city has to the queer community. This past weekend was a great illustration of just how many people are willing to come out and support the idea of people over dollars. Most importantly, this past weekend illustrated that people who took the time to show up fully recognize that violence is not the way to encourage political change. The way to encourage political change is by educating individuals about the actual power of their vote and how it varies, how they need to vote in various elections. For far too long, people have been told that voting for president is the most important election to vote in. For far too long, people have done little to no research on all of the other items that are sliding through by just choosing the option to vote party line. For far too long, people have ignored their local elections that will actually have the most impact on their lives. The roughly 5,000 people that surrounded the State House on Saturday, many were voters. Many of the roughly 10,000 individuals who attended Outfest on Saturday were voters. With all that said, make the choice you feel is best for your city, since the AG and Governor want to use freedom of religion, which according to online searches, search results, falls mostly under Christianity. And remember, I'm a Christian, I love me some Jesus. To support their argument, I will bring it back to Christianity. You have the ability to be Judas by accepting millions of dollars in silver exchanged for your constituents' lives, or you have the ability to be like Jesus when he says in Matthew 6:25-31, "Therefore I tell you, do not worry about your life, what you will eat, or drink, or about your body, what you will wear. Is not life more than food, and the body more than clothes? Look at the birds of the air. They do not sow, or reap, or stow away in barns, and yet your heavenly Father..." your heavenly Father feeds them. Are you not much more valuable than they? Can you, can any one of you, by worrying at a single hour to your life, and why do you worry about these clothes? See how the flowers of the field grow? Do they not labor or spin? I'm sorry, they do not labor or spin. Yet I tell you that not even Solomon in his plunder was dressed like one of these. If that is how God clothes the grass of the field, which is here today and tomorrow is thrown into the fire, will he not much more clothe you, you of little faith? So do not worry saying, what shall we eat, or what shall we drink, or what should we wear, or how will we pay for stuff in the city? For the pagans run to those things."
Ms. Bearwald. Thank you.
I've got two more lines. Well, you know what, that's okay.
Joseph Hardy.
The last time we met here, there were a lot of people who showed up to tell you about the horrors of conversion therapy. You made it clear that the content of the 2021 ordinance was not your main focal point, saying that it lacked teeth and that the $3.7 million in funding that the state would withhold if you did not repeal it was your main concern. I remember you expressed feeling like everyone was repeating the same things and that we were going nowhere in our discussion. I want to give you some of my personal perspective. I was born in Columbia and have lived here in South Carolina for the 19 years I've been alive. I'm a student of the University of South Carolina here in Columbia, and I went to school in Lexington-Richland District 5 public schools as a kid. Growing up, it felt like every other week there was some new school rule, or city ordinance, or state law that restricted the rights of queer children, from whether we could safely use the bathroom at school, to what names the government would allow us to go by, to the level of privacy we were allowed to have about our own identities. All of them carried the same message to kids like me. You're not like us, you're an abomination, you don't belong here. Repealing this ordinance would send that same message. You have an obligation as community leaders to protect the most vulnerable of our city. If the ordinance is a symbol that lacks teeth, then let it be a symbol of your unwavering support to the queer community of Columbia. Let it be a symbol that shows we can't be bribed or bullied by the state into stepping down from what we believe in. And if your concern is that it lacks teeth, then give it teeth. A lot of people who came here last time we met to speak to you had expressed empathy over how difficult a decision this is. I respectfully disagree. I think this is only a difficult decision if you've never been a queer kid. I don't think there's any amount of money in the world, not $3.7 million, not $37 billion, that would make me contribute to the feelings of worthlessness that I felt as a child to another child. Thank you for your time.
Wes Russell.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Wes Russell, and I'm over off of Shadow Creek Court in Reflections Neighborhood. I find myself drawn to a specific passage of scripture each and every single time the concept of allowing conversion therapy once again rears its leviathan head. Genesis 2, or excuse me, Genesis 22:11-12 clearly states, "But the angel of the Lord called out from heaven, 'Abraham, Abraham.' Here I am,' he replied. 'Do not lay a hand on the boy,' he said. 'Do not do anything to him. Now that I know that you fear God, because you have not only withheld from me your son, but your only son.'" Conversion therapy, the debate around conversion therapy has exclusively been centered with a religious ideation, and has been perpetuated to supposedly extend religious liberties, or to classify homosexuality as a mental disorder, as you've heard previously, or, in this lovely case, to help Alan Wilson stand out more in his gubernatorial primary against Nancy Mace. However, there seems to be one thing that conversion therapy is successful at, and that's killing our children. Or more accurately, getting our LGBTQ-plus children to feel as though they have to kill themselves for us to accept them. Everyone in this room already knows this statistic, but to reiterate, the American Journal of Public Health states that the conversion treatment causes children to be 75% more likely to plan suicide, 88% more likely to attempt suicide, and 92% more likely to suffer from suicidal ideation all of their life. South Park was making this joke 20 years ago, so let's not pretend that anyone in this room is surprised by that. The Trevor Project also did a study that shows that this kid crucifixion crusade also cost the United States somewhere around $9.23 billion, which we can all agree is quite the price tag for something that every single psychological organization has repeatedly agreed only causes trauma and not change, and is also worth much more than $3.7 million. Now, far be it for me to argue that Christians should have less religious freedom, or any other group, as I am quite devout myself. That's why I know my scripture is rather insistent on the importance of choice, specifically Joshua 24:15 states, "But if serving the Lord seems undesirable to you, then choose for yourselves this day whom you will serve, whether the gods of your ancestors served beyond the Euphrates, or the gods of the Amorites in whose land you are living. But for me and my household, we will serve the Lord." You see, this is not a discussion about Christianity, about Judaism, Islam, or any other religious or traditional freedoms. It's about preferring your child to be dead as opposed to gay. That is why I think so deeply about Genesis 22nd. This ordinance that we're trying to repeal gives the same thing that God did to Abraham, except rather than Christ, or God our Father telling them not to kill their child, it is the city council. Thank you.
Markurious Bird.
My name is Markurious Bird. I live at 1625 William Street. I'm a constituent of Councilman McDowell. I am here strictly to just ask y'all to do not repeal this ordinance. As a Columbia resident, my vision of South Carolina in the city of Columbia has had this ordinance in mind. I like that we are a place where we are trying to protect friends and families who aren't necessarily like myself. This is a home that I have chosen to live in because we are doing things like this, and I would like to continue to choose to live here, because the council has the strength to do something that it has already done and keep this ordinance in place. So, thank you, have a nice day.
Christina Picozy.
Hi, I'm Christina Picozy, and I'm the Executive Director for the Harriet Hancock Center. I have spoken and texted with a few of you over the last six weeks. I have helped to coordinate and collect information to share with you all about the financial impact of repealing this ordinance, suicide rates of LGBTQ youth, and the reasons for lack of reporting. So many in this room have also done the same. In meetings and on phone calls, I have explained the non-clinical work the Harriet Hancock Center does for the community, and the resources we share and connect community members to, the collaborations we create and foster through Columbia, the Midlands, and the state of South Carolina. I can tell that some of you have been impressed by our work, because we do a lot with a little, but it's not always something I'm proud of. I have also had some of you stop responding to my calls and my text messages and my requests for collaborative conversation. Over the weekend, I had coffee, and I was asked if I had shared data with you all that explained the potential harm and impact of repealing this ordinance on homelessness, mental health, and family connection. The person reiterated the importance of sharing data with city council, because city council likes data. Yes, I have, and community members have, and we have shared data points and stories, and I don't know if you care. I was asked about alternative policy options. I was asked directly, what am I going to do when the ordinance gets repealed? What is the center going to do when this gets repealed? There are so many organizations, not just the Harriet Hancock Center, that can and are doing work to support the community in Columbia, and subsequently, the Midlands, in a variety of public health concern areas. The tone used made me feel like the work we are doing collectively in the community isn't good enough. There are many organizations, from nonprofits to churches, whose work protects LGBTQ youth, advocates on their behalf, and helps to empower them as they become adults navigating the world. The tone and questioning felt like they were removing the city's responsibility to be a partner in figuring out other solutions. I can give you half a dozen policy options, and none of them are going to do the same or have the same meaning and impact as what this ordinance is positioned to do. The other policy options are also not options that should replace this ordinance, but should be in addition to. They should be efforts that are implemented because they are evidence-based, or will help the city implement evidence-based practices. The city says it wants to help the LGBTQ community, but actions speak louder than words. Have you considered partnering with any organization, college, or university, to commission an in-depth community needs assessment to understand the needs of the LGBTQ community? Or to assess the consequences, like an increase in homelessness among LGBTQ youth and adolescents since the passage of South Carolina's House Bill 4624? Have you had conversations to explore harm reduction in drug user health, especially as it relates to the LGBTQ community? Can you tell me how many community members you've referred to the Harriet Hancock Center or to other LGBTQ-affirming professionals in spaces? These are public health issues that impact the LGBTQ community, often at higher rates than cisgender and heterosexual counterparts. Some of you have shared that you know repealing this ordinance will cause harm to LGBTQ youth, and I know you've said that you are not in the business of hurting kids, but repealing this ordinance does that. It also tells Colombians, not just LGBTQ community, that you care more about the 0.8% of the budget than you do youth.
Comments? Sarah Phillips.
My name's Sarah Phillips. I am here on behalf of Christine Hay, the President of League of Women Voters. This is not my gifting, so y'all bear with me. According to its positions published in the 2024-26 Impact on Issues, the League of Women Voters of the United States supports equal rights for all under the state and federal law, including the LGBTQ-plus community. Consequently, the League of Women Voters of the Columbia area supports the City of Columbia's ordinance 2021-021 that prohibits conversion therapy for minors. Conversion therapy, which the ordinance defines as "any practice or treatment that seeks to change an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity," has been banned in Columbia since 2021, and it's worth noting that today, over 100 other municipalities across the United States has also banned this harmful therapy. As recent city hall meetings have indicated, the ordinance has received wide support from the Columbia area as a means by which to protect our valued community of the LGBTQ group and from the medically inappropriate treatment. Recent actions taken at the state level by the Attorney General, Allen Wilson, disregards the principle of home rule, supported by the League, which lets local jurisdiction make laws germane to its jurisdiction, safe from state interference. In addition, the legislators' use of coercive budget measures and Wilson's failure to delay any action against the ban until the US Supreme Court has a chance to weigh in are examples of the means by which home rule has been violated. For these reasons, the League of Women Voters in the Columbia area stands in support of Columbia City Council's ordinance and opposes the coercive and inappropriate actions of the legislature and the Attorney General. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Layer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Layer. I live in the Rosewood neighborhood, and I am asking that you please vote no on repealing the ban. The City of Columbia's commitment to the LGBTQ-plus community has a tremendous and measurable impact on the city. Admittedly, I'm not as familiar with the city's revenue as y'all are, but I bet if you looked at the monthly H-tax revenues that go to supporting existing city services, you would see the economic impact that big celebrations like Outfest, like Pride, have on the city of Columbia in the month of June. The LGBTQ-plus community has a tremendous economic impact, because celebrations of this size don't happen in our surrounding municipalities. These bring people together into our cities, to our local businesses, and bring more economic impact to our city. Voting no preserves that economic impact that the city and local businesses need to thrive when out of town college students go home, but it also reaffirms our commitment to the LGBTQ-plus community in a time where bad faith actors are trying to weaken that support. Legislators in the State House are pushing this proviso, not because they care about the city, but really because they want to score political points, they want to antagonize the LGBTQ-plus community, and erode even more of their civil rights. But they can't do any of this without you giving them the power to do so. This proviso is about taking away the city's existing support to our LGBTQ-plus community, because it doesn't happen anywhere else in the Midlands on that scale. Legislators in the State House are bullies, and they're cowards. They think they can lever, they think they can leverage this proviso over your heads because they think they can get away with it. They want you to focus on this money in the budget so that you forget what you are made of. They want you to forget that they can't repeal this ordinance without, without you giving them the power to do this. Reaffirming the city's commitment to LGBTQ-plus community also sends a message to the State House that the city will not be bullied into capitulating, making it less likely for them to try this again. And as a city, I believe we can tighten our belt and, and fight back. So, Mr. Mayor and council, you have the ability to really make a statement and reaffirm your commitment to the economic impact that the LGBTQ-plus community brings to the city. You have the, you have the ability to not only publicly vote no on repealing this ordinance, but you can double down, and even commit even more public support and more public dollars to the LGBTQ-plus community. Please vote no. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Raj Aluri.
I am here for the item number three, agenda item number three, not for number two. Thank you for your support for the Columbia International Festival. All I want to say is that I'm a student of international relations and political science. It's good for me to occasionally come to the council meetings, just to be enjoy, meeting y'all, seeing y'all, and just to see what goes on in the city business. But all I want to say is that whatever the decisions you make today on the item number two, fear God and do the right thing, seriously. Whatever God, you know, we all stand before God, and I have to answer to Him all the decisions we make in this life. So do the right thing, not, the money's not the speaking, more than the word, we're accountable to God. Finally, whatever happens today, I'm not here for the item number two, but please do not hurt H-tax budget. I know that's the, that's why I'm here, because it's going to hurt a lot of organizations that promote the city, that promote who we are as a city. So $3.7 million, I hope that would not come out of the hospitable tax money, whatever the decisions you make. Thank you so much. Y'all, I know, public service is a commitment. Y'all serve as public servants. Thank you for your time, although it's a sacrifice. A lot more things could be, y'all could be doing with all the talent and the gifts you have, but you give your time and everything to the city of Columbia. Thank you for your service. Thank you. By the way, I do want to say one more thing. I do have a psychiatric son, psychiatrist, is John Scottkins, and he battles to these, these troubles as a psychiatrist. That's why he stayed. John Scottkins took a faculty position where he believes that his systems of value, they would, they would subscribe to. So he wanted to move to different universities to teach or practice, but he found a good community of people where they all band together, so he gets the support he needs to practice what he believes in, is the right thing to do in his practice, not necessarily job. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Wade Fulmer, he says he's here to speak on item two.
My name is Wade Fulmer. I have been a healthcare advocate for 30 years. I am here in support of continuing the ban. Care, health, continuing the ban. Good health is care, it's not cloning. To the good people here desiring that correct decision, let us not be fooled by red excuses, by the corrupt money and politics, by the control of minds and bodies. Duty is care. Duty is care, duty is enforcement of the ordinance. Understand that the ban is only half the battle. There has to be leadership for rule of law, not excuses and sweep the constituents under the rug. Be prepared to fight for enforcement. Do not accept politics excuses. Health matters, continue the ban. Thank you.
My name is Kim Felton, and I'm here from West Columbia. I have been very fortunate to have three opportunities to speak, so rather than reiterate anything that I've said before, I haven't summarized on this poster. I want to thank you for the consideration that you seem to have given this issue. I would like to just jump on one of the other ideas that has been given to you about forming a commission, perhaps to make a better assessment of what is needed for this community. I'm sure you've been as impressed as I have with the quality of people that are working with these vulnerable youth. I've been so impressed with the work that they're doing and what they're giving of themselves, and perhaps that would lend itself to some sort of commission. Before I close, I'm going to ask your forgiveness for being presumptuous in saying this. I know you've done nothing but think of the ramifications of this decision, but I am going to ask you one more time before you make your final decision to consider the ramifications to the autonomy of this body for acquiescing to this demand. I believe not only will you condemn yourselves to a reduction in your ability to control the budget here, but you will very likely condemn other cities in South Carolina to the same. So not only am I asking you to vote no, I'm asking you to find a way to fight this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Rickman and council members, first, I want to say thank you for providing this platform for all of us to speak to you today because this is a very important part of the process, and I'm very appreciative that you have been willing to hear your constituents and people in the community. So thank you. The state of South Carolina is threatening to withhold city funding unless Columbia repeals its ban on conversion therapy for minors, and this was unanimously passed by this body in 2021 to protect vulnerable children from abuse disguised as care. This isn't just about one ordinance. This is about a dangerous precedent, the state using financial coercion to override local decision-making and to force the city to abandon its values. What happens when we cave to this today? Today, it's the LGBTQ plus youth. Tomorrow? Tomorrow, what else will Columbia be told to erase or dismantle to keep funding? This is authoritarian overreach, plain and simple. If we yield to it, we invite a future where Columbia's policies are no longer made in this chamber, but are dictated from afar at the expense of our most marginalized communities. The truth is, conversion therapy is not therapy, it's harm. Every leading medical organization will say so. So upholding this ban is not only legal, it's ethical, it's just, and it's necessary. Please, let us not be bullied into silence. Let us stand firm for our values in this city, for our children, for our autonomy, and for the soul of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Saunders, and if you would, as you come forward, please state your first name for the record.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Dorey Saunders. I'm a 54-year-old Black transgendered woman living in the city of Columbia, South Carolina. We've heard medical professionals, we've heard people that have gone through shock therapy. They've all said it doesn't work, but I have a few questions that I'd like you all to ponder when you make this decision. Since we're talking about therapy and we're protecting the children, it seems that lawmakers seem to, a lot of times, assault the children. We have right here, just recently, South Carolina MAGA rep RJ May, who frequently posted about protecting kids from the LGBT people and DEI, has been arrested for distributing images of children being sexually abused. So, since we want to talk about therapy and we're protecting the children, do we have therapy to stop teen pregnancy? Do we have therapy that works for birth control? This is about an attack on a marginalized group of people that is trying to erase their very existence. At this point in my life, the best thing that I can do is stand in solidarity and unity for the children that are coming behind me. They've told you it doesn't work, but at the end of the day, will you be able to sleep at night knowing that you were bought or sold or bullied because of them withholding funds? It's called, we stand, we resist, and we simply say no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms.
Hello, council? Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm here today as a straight man, not a student, a working man, and I am here nonetheless to speak against the cowardly precedent that would be set if we trade money for our legal code. And this is clearly about the money. There has not been a lick of evidence that has come out since this was passed unanimously in 2021 that has provided any reason to believe that conversion therapy is safer, less abusive, or more effective than we thought it was when we decided to ban it. This is 100% about the money, and I would like to acknowledge and respect your responsiveness to public pressure. There are a lot of cities out here who are a lot less lucky, who would take that money in a heartbeat and not listen to the people walking into this room talking to you to your face. But this cowardly precedent we would set would not stop at just conversion therapy. Just for a simple example, we have one more item up here today that's relatively major, a moratorium on, I believe it's single-family vacation rentals and Airbnb-style housing due to the dangerous incident that happened a couple days ago. And this is the same as the conversion therapy ban in that it highlights a difference between the values of the people of the city and the people of the state. A ban on Airbnbs would reduce state tax revenue, however, it would also reduce annoyance, reduce danger, and reduce the cost of living and cost of housing for people who live in this city. And I do not want the Attorney General to be well and truly aware of the fact that our legal code is for sale when that comes up and when he comes up. And if he thinks that our legal code is for sale, I think he can go to hell. Thank you.
Senator Tamika Isaac Devine?
Mayor Rickman, members of council, good evening. First of all, thank you so much for allowing me to send my remarks before and to be here today. And y'all know I don't do well with written remarks, but three minutes goes by fast, so I did write this stuff. So unfortunately, I was unable to be here during the first two meetings on the issue, but I wanted to make every effort to be here tonight. I come to you not only as a proud citizen of Columbia and one of your state senators, but also as someone who deeply respects the hard decision that you must make, especially when threats to city funding are used as political weapons. I know this is not an easy position for you to be in. You've all taken an oath to protect and serve the citizens of Columbia, and you have done that. And I do understand the pressure you're on, but I urge you to please stand strong and not cave into the games being played by people who do not call Columbia home. So let me say the quiet part out loud. This budget proviso and the threat of a lawsuit is not about any policy. It's about political theater. This is a headline grabber for two men who want to be governor. This is not about Columbia, but it's about their ambition and who can be the strongest person on the right. I've spoken to several of my colleagues in the state senate who have confided in me that had they not thought that the city wanted them to keep the proviso, they actually would have voted to remove it from the budget, and that is deeply troubling. Most of you were not on council when this ordinance banning for conversion therapy was enacted, but I was. I remember clearly that this was not about emotion, and it was not about scoring political points. It wasn't even about our HRC grading, but it was about listening to the people, our people. Testimony from parents, medical professionals, and survivors made it abundantly clear. So-called conversion therapy is dangerous, it's harmful, and it has no basis in science. This city has always stood for fairness, safety, and protecting our citizens, and repealing this ordinance would turn your back on the very values that make Columbia strong. Tonight, I ask you to please do what's right. Don't bow to political pressure, listen to your constituents, stand up for our young people. Since I've been elected to the state senate, I routinely get asked a lot if I enjoy it and do I miss the city. And I typically tell them that, other than missing the extraordinary staff that you all have, and I miss you guys, I miss being part of a real body that cares about the citizens that we serve. I miss being part of a body that doesn't come at each other with political divides, partisan politics, or one-up showmanship. I know that each of you really want what's best for this city. In this political climate, what you all do is fleeting. Columbia has always been a leader. Just last week, the Richland County passed a hate crimes ordinance, and I saw people praising them online and saying, wow, couldn't the City of Columbia do that? Well, the City of Columbia did do it. The City of Columbia was a leader in this state, and now we have several cities and counties that have a hate crime ordinance. You have always shown leadership. You've always been an example, and that is what your decision today will show. It will show leadership. If you cave to the bullying of the state, you will be showing that the state can bully us and take away things. So what's next? The hate crime ordinance? What's next? Your autonomy to make sure that you are regulating short-term rentals, which the state has failed to do. It will show, if you show leadership today, it will not only show your leadership to the state, but to other cities that come behind you. And I really want you all to hear me here. Know that as your senator, I will continue to fight this unconstitutional proviso. And those of you who know me well, Mr. Mayor, know that I love a fight. So this is a clear violation of home rule. So whether it is the chambers of the State House or on the South Carolina Supreme Court courtroom, I will stand up to protect this city's autonomy, stand for the wishes of our citizens, and defend our shared values. I will continue to stand with you, fight to make sure that not just here, but this city's autonomy to do what is right is protected at the State House. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for your leadership.
Good evening, council members, community members, neighbors. I'm here to firstly ask to please vote no. Secondly, I'd like to ask you all, why are you not angrier about this? Why is there no stronger response to this affront? They are attempting to overturn our city's ordinance against conversion therapy, not because it's definitively unconstitutional, not because it's unlawful, but from your words, performative politics. If that in and of itself wasn't enough to make you scoff at Allen Wilson for having the nerve to use your people in such an unchill and immoral manner, why was the $3.7 million in blackmail not the firestarter? You have immeasurably hard jobs. I promise that that's not lost on me. I respect the work you do. However, I cannot overstate this. We are potentially watching the initial steps of erosion in our ability to maintain local autonomy. And if we let it happen, if we cave now, then this is more than just a funding cut. This is the first crack in the foundation of home rule for us. Let me be clear, this is not just about conversion therapy as urgent as that is. This is about who governs Columbia. Do we answer to our people or to bullies in the State House who think they know more about our streets, our youth, and our values than we do? Whether the state's power play is symbolic or not, the damage is real. This is about whether our city government answers to its people or to political pressure in Columbia, the other Columbia in the State House where lawmakers pretend to know more about all of us. Oh wait, did I repeat that? I'm sorry if I did, I'm wasting time. This is an assault not only on LGBTQIA+ youth, but on our city's right to self-govern, to protect, and to define its own morality. If you are good people truly, then good. It goes without saying the money should be further down on your priority list. We should not let fear stop us in the face of what is right. I know it's scary, and I know these are some intense responsibilities that are on your shoulders right now, but we must refuse to roll over. We cannot let bullies from the State House dictate how we protect our children or use us as pawns. Our city, I mean, our job as a city isn't just to create growth, pave roads, and balance budgets. It's to hold the line for those who are most vulnerable, to reflect the values of the people who actually live here, and to serve all of them, simply just serve all of them, not just the ones who make noise at the top. So to close out, I'd like to quote Tyler Bailey, who I also thank wholeheartedly for his recent words and stance on this topic. Sometimes we just need to do what's right. We just need to stand up to the bullies.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Fowler. I've lived in Columbia a long time, and generally, almost all the time, I am so proud of this city. I was really proud of this city when this ordinance was passed several years ago. It was the right thing to do then, and keeping the ordinance is the right thing to do now. I know most of you, I consider that most of you have been my friends since before you were even elected to city council. I know you, and I know you are smart enough to realize that this kind of so-called therapy causes real harm to children. I hope you don't allow the fear of losing a few million dollars persuade you to do this kind of harm to children in our city. I'm pretty sure there has been no outcry from your constituents who are desperate to receive conversion therapy in the city limits of Columbia. I don't think you've heard from many of those folks. I heard your prayer for courage. I hope you have the courage to stand up to politicians who don't even live here, who are looking for campaign talking points. I hope you have the courage to stand up for Columbia's children.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Isabel Mandel. I spoke the first day that this was addressed and was not available the second. I am here now. I will briefly reiterate my qualifications to speak on this subject, but I will not go into detail because I believe at this point, all of us could stipulate that conversion therapy is harmful. So you know that. I don't need to address it. But I am a PhD in psychology. I'm a prior president of the South Carolina Psychological Association, a prior president of the South Carolina Professional Psychology Association. I was on the City of Columbia Planning Commission for some years on two different occasions, and I have been on many nonprofit boards and have been very engaged in the City of Columbia the entire time that I have resided here. All of that being said, one more time, I hope that we can stipulate that we are all clear that conversion therapy is harmful to children, period. So I don't know that we need to address that again, we're on round three of this. I think we can all stipulate as well that this appears to be a political decision that you are facing, and I would also ask that you echo the bravery that many of the people who are here have evidenced, right? No one wants to be here to speak on this. This should be rote, routine, included the protection of children. Why is this a question? The people who are here who have been vulnerable and brave... The people who are here who have been vulnerable and brave, I would hope that you would respect that by being brave yourself, because that is what this appears to be. This isn't about, are you harming children? We know that. This is clear. So what this is, is a decision that is related to morality. It is a decision related to ethics. It is a decision, decision related to potentially your religious belief, if you care about that. It is a decision that on the alternative side is politics. I would hope for bravery that is echoed in this room. The bravery that has been evidenced here is so admirable, so inspiring, that I hope that it inspires you to be brave, because that is what this is, right? You're going to have to be in a position where you will be potentially targeted, or there will be consequences. But this is an issue of morality and ethics and bravery. It is not an issue of whether or not we are harming children, because we know that. I, I have to say, I'm annoyed to be here. This is a decision that it seems like to me is very, very clear. There is clarity here. There is a path. It is clear. It is a small percentage of the budget. You are being blackmailed. What is next? Many of these things have been addressed. I will not reiterate, other than to say, let's stipulate this is harm. You are voting for harm if you vote for the repeal. Let's stipulate this is a political decision. You are showing a lack of bravery should you vote to repeal this ban. Thank you.
Mayor, members of city council, this concludes the first public input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, would you like me to proceed with the approval of minutes? Item number one. Mr. Mayor, you ready to proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
Number one, council is asked to approve the June 10th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
A motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion is second, any changes? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance, first reading item number two, ordinance number 2025-043, repealing ordinance number 2021-021 that amended the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 14, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 5, offenses involving minors to add Division 4, conversion therapy for minors prohibited.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, ordinance 2025-43 will repeal ordinance 2021-21, which passed in June of 2021, and amended the city's code to add an offense prohibiting conversion therapy for minors within the city. Currently, no violations of this offense have been reported in the city of Columbia, nor do we know of anyone practicing conversion therapy in Columbia at this date. The city of Columbia is also the only city in the state to have passed a law prohibiting conversion therapy, which means that conversion therapy is available statewide outside the city of Columbia, including Richland County. Government overreach in 2021 has met government overreach in 2025. We have also received requests to repeal the 2021 ordinance from the South Carolina Attorney General. The Attorney General's position is that the ordinance is unconstitutional and preempts state law. In addition to the Attorney General's request, the Senate has passed a budget proviso that will result in the loss of funding for municipality that prohibits conversion therapy for minors. This proviso is now passed the House, and its inclusion in the budget will result in a loss of approximately $3.7 million for the city of Columbia. These funds are important to maintain public safety and city services and do not, and will not put an additional tax burden on our cities. This will also likely lead to further loss of state funds in upcoming years for basic services as well as projects deemed critical for the growth of Columbia. Although my position is not determined by any of the pressure being imposed by either the legislature or the Attorney General, I believe that there is a practical nature to local government decisions, even when it is necessary to balance competing interests, limited resources, and complex personal beliefs. Based on the lack of violations, the uncertainty of the costs, and timeliness of a legal challenge with the state, the threat to our budget, and the impractical nature of the ban itself, I am voting yes to repeal the ordinance and will work to repair the fractured community interest that has endured the politics of a very emotional and passionate issue and has hurt many people in the process. I'd like to make a motion for approval to repeal ordinance 2021-21.
There's a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say something. Most of you all know that I have been on both sides of this issue, but I also believe that when you know better, you do better. And I've heard a lot of things recently, over the last three days, but there is one thing that I didn't hear, and I do think it's important that that aspect be discussed. When I did my research, I did not know anything about the equity, municipal equity index, knew nothing about it. As I read it, and I saw that the tool is used to help folks in the LGBT community decide where to live, I likened it to the Green Book. And for those of you all who are not familiar, I'm gonna read. The Green Book, officially known as the Negro Motorist Green Book, was a guide for African-American travelers during the Jim Crow era. Published from 1936 to 1966, it provided information about safe places for African-Americans to stay, eat, and refuel in a time of racial segregation and discrimination that was prevalent. This guide served as a crucial tool for ensuring the safety and dignity of African-American travelers, helping them to navigate the challenging social landscape of the time. And when I read that, that is what I likened this index to. I do not mind saying that I agree with my colleagues, most of my colleagues that are voting to repeal it. I, I agree with the merits on those issues. However, as a Black female, African-American female growing up in Columbia, South Carolina, born and raised, I know that feeling of walking into rooms and not feeling comfortable. And then I think I have a confirmation that's really messing me up right now, but I see my judge that I work for. As a young lawyer, I worked for a judge, and if she gives a nod, I'll say her name. But she was the first African-American circuit court judge in the state of South Carolina. And we traveled sometimes, and we never knew, well, she was a little bit more comfortable, but some places we felt welcome, and some places we simply did not. I can say today, even as a member of city council, there are places here in Columbia that I'm not made to feel welcome. And so that is, and I'm just explaining this to my colleagues, why I have to, why I cannot vote to repeal it, because I think it needs to be said, and I think it needs to be heard, because how people treat you has so much to do with your, how you see yourself in this space, and how you see yourself in this world, and where you belong. And I needed to say that. I think that's it. And because my judge is here, and her husband, Judge Lee, who I did not ask to be here, and she was a part of my comments, that is my confirmation, yes, Lord, that I am doing and saying the right thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to state for Dr. Bustles that she wanted to send her regrets, but due to a family emergency, she's not able to be here in person, but she wanted to express her appreciation for all of the public comments. And with that, Mayor, are you ready for the roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
No.
Dr. Bustles?
No.
Is that no?
Did you hear that? No?
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Ms. Hamon, I'd like to make a few comments, if I could, please?
Yes, sir.
On this vote. Four years ago, June 2021, and I'm glad she's here today, I had the privilege of working with my former, my former council colleague, Tamika Isaac-Divine, and Sam Davis and Howard Duvall, to put the conversion therapy ordinance in place. It came from the urging of many to focus on getting the highest score on the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index. The Equality Index was designated to help residents, as my colleague mentioned, to learn how inclusive their city's laws and policies are of the LGBTQ+ people. Columbia received a score of 72 out of 100. Charleston received a 70, and Greenville received a 66. Of note, the conversion therapy ordinance was worth a bump in our ratings of two points out of 100. Now, please fast forward four years to today, June 2025. The calls for staying strong and to keep, keep up the Equality Index scores continue to come through the push for a repeal of the conversion therapy ordinance. But there is surely so much more that I have found that we could be doing as it comes to the index and our quality of life here in Columbia. So many more issues, policies, community outreach, partnerships, and trusted networks that we could create and grow to increase Columbia's score on our Equity Index, forming an LGBTQ+ advisory council that helps our staff and our Columbia Police Department grow a network and a culture of safe, reliable resources. More points. Growing our liaison programs within the city and Columbia Police Department to create the safe communities that so many people spoke about during all these public input sessions. More points. There are many other categories to realize, more points for us on this index. I recognize it has come to the point it is not completely about scoring on an index, but when it's all considered, the conversion therapy ordinance's intent is to stop the abuse of our youth. I do believe there's a better path to working together to be more responsive when abuse reports are heard about. Getting to the teenagers to let them know, to show them that there is a wonderful community of welcoming organizations and resources, and a way forward for them, is something that we can do to combat the suicide rates that many mention in all these public hearings. Helping our homeless youth that have left home and are now on the streets of Columbia know where they can find safety is something we can do with true, understood partnerships. I also know that all of what I'm saying will be met with, yeah, but, I choose to believe in, yeah, let's try. At the end of the day, it all comes down to local, and Columbia is committed to trying to do the best for all of our citizens, despite what is happening around us. With that in mind, I am voting yes to repeal.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're moving forward with ordinance's second reading, item three, ordinance number 2025-045 Item three, ordinance number 2025-045, to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the city of Columbia, South Carolina, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026. First reading approval was given on June 10th, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell? Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there may, are you prepared to make an additional motion from the floor for clarification of the budget?
I was.
Yes, sir. Just one second, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I left my document.
That's okay. Thank you.
After the approval of, of item three, I'd like to additional motion to, upon the final approval of ordinance number 2025-043, city council directs the city manager to restore local government funding from the state of South Carolina in the general fund, reduce the transfer from hospitality tax by the equal amount. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Now, motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Item four, ordinance number 2025-054, establishing a moratorium on the issuance of new permits in residential areas pursuant to Columbia's short-term, short-term rental ordinance at Columbia Code, Section 5400, as amended. First reading approval was given on June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? And we will continue to work on this issue. Obviously, there's a lot to, to continue to work on there and hope to have something back in July to bring forth in strengthening some of the ordinance that we discussed the other day. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor recommend?
Aye.
Thank you.
Other matters, item five, 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2025 Action Plan. Ms. Felicia Kilgore, Community Development Director; Ms. Sierra Harris, PhD, Citizens' Advisory Committee Chair; and Mr. Eric Chatham, the Principal with Civitas LLC.
Good evening, Mayor recommend and council. We're here to present the final consolidated plan for fiscal year 2025 through 2029. And we will have, okay, I see Eric, Eric Chatham, which is our consultant, online. So the purpose of our consolidated plan that we've been working on for several months, engaging our residents, stakeholders, our council members, our executive staff, to gather information, feedback, as well as data. But first and foremost, we want to outline the purpose of this consolidated plan. It is a strategic planning document that helps the city of Columbia prioritize our funding to support housing, community development, as well as economic development needs for low-to-moderate-income individuals in the city of Columbia. It also helps us outline how to best use federal funds, funds that we receive, or have been receiving on an annual basis from United State Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we refer to as HUD. And it's outlined for the next three to five years. Again, it is designed to, to assess the community needs, set priorities and goals, guide funding decisions, promote community engagement, and ensure compliance is followed and regulated with our federal requirements. So today, I will have Ms. Harris, Dr. Sierra Harris, as a matter of fact, she is the president of our Citizens Advisory Committee. She will come forth and kind of outline the... the process of vetting, reviewing, as well as providing recommendation on projects for our action plan, which is for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, so that everyone understands how those awards will be recommended. And after Ms. Harris or Dr. Harris finished speaking, we will turn the presentation over to our consultant, Mr. Eric Chatham, he's online. He's been working with the City of Columbia for well over 10 years in regards to our previous consolidated plan, as well as providing staff with additional training when it's needed. So he is well versed. He is based out of Charleston, South Carolina. He is listed as one of the National Certified National HUD Technician Providers for HUD, and he's also certified in home funding.
Good evening, esteemed members of City Council. My name is Sierra Harris, and I'm honored to serve as the Chairwoman of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Community Development. Our committee ensures that the citizens' voices are amplified when developing the consolidated and annual action plans in accordance with the guidelines set forth by HUD. We, being a committee that is solely composed of citizens, are actively involved in the planning, implementation, and the assessment of the consolidated plan programs. Our process was lengthy, but it was really rewarding. We met monthly to learn about the entire grant selection process for the Community Development Block Grant, as well as the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grants programs. We had special meetings with the members of community development staff to ensure that prior applicants were compliant and that they were eligible to apply again to receive funding and to learn about all the amazing things that these grants are enabling our city to do for our most vulnerable community members. In total, we reviewed 21 applications, which is amazing. That was a wonderful experience. And we worked as a committee to make our selections and our recommendations before turning them over to the City of Columbia's Office of Community Development for their final recommendations. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to the consultants.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to give a brief presentation of our results of the community outreach, as well as our recommendations for the priorities and goals for these two or for these three grant sources for the next five years. As Ms. Kilgore mentioned, the intent of the consolidated plan is much like the city's comprehensive planning process. HUD effectively requires us every five years to take a pause in our programming. We evaluate the needs of our community, the housing stock and the facilities and infrastructure for our residents, and to prioritize, based on the eligible uses of each of the three programs and the regulatory constraints, and certainly the amount of funding, that to prioritize those uses for those funds. So the consolidated plan, again, as Ms. Kilgore mentioned, will be our guiding document for funding recommendations moving forward. So a quick summary of our citizen participation efforts. We began last winter with a series of four neighborhood meetings, all hosted in the evening. These were widely broadcast on the city website, through the Neighborhood Association contacts, social media, etc. We also simultaneously had two online surveys, one directed for community residents and a second for stakeholders, typically our nonprofit and affordable housing developer partners. We also hosted two official public hearings on April 30th and June 3rd. And we have recently concluded our public comment period that was held for 30 days between mid-April and mid-May. The full plan has been available and is on the city website. It's well over 200 pages, lots of data about our residents and their needs, the housing stock, and other community development activities. So we're not intending to necessarily summarize the entire document here, but just those key findings, if you will. So from our survey of community residents, we had 159 responses. One of the highest priority was affordable housing, or addressing the affordable housing needs with three sort of subtopics in that category. New affordable housing development for both homeownership, but also rental opportunities. Rehab of current owner-occupied housing, specifically as it relates to elderly or disabled homeowners. And then down payment assistance program for our first-time home buyers. Of course, these are all three programs that the city has facilitated for many, many years at this point, great track records. So essentially, this is support for existing programs that are well-run and quite effective, again, certainly considering the funding limitations we have. The second category of need is our public services. As a reminder, our CDBG funds, we can use only 15% of that allocation for public services. On our home allocation, effectively, we can use none of it for public services. That's all for housing production. And then finally, under our HOPWA grant, some of our funds can be used for supportive services for clients that are also receiving housing stability services. So we're very limited in this category, what we can fund, based on the regulations or constraints of the three programs. But neighborhood services, supportive services for families and individuals experiencing homelessness, as well as childcare services for single parents and young parents looking for gainful employment. And finally, under the public improvements category, this is our sort of one of our larger categories of eligible use for CDBG-only, public facility and infrastructure improvements around neighborhood revitalization. And we talked with Community Development Committee at length about neighborhood revitalization efforts, including street improvements, sidewalk and walkability in our neighborhoods, as well as general neighborhood cleanup. And of course, the city has done these types of programs for many years. And our neighborhood cleanup, that also includes things like code enforcement and removal of slum or blighted properties in our residential neighborhoods. So with the data collected, input from staff and other stakeholders, as well as our residents and the results of our surveys, as well as the limitations of the grants themselves and what we can and cannot fund, these are our identified priority needs and then our corresponding goals. The template for this consolidated plan has us create these high-level needs. And then each year, we allocate funding towards these goals that then go to serving or meeting those needs. Each of the goals in the annual action plan will have projected outcomes for that particular year based on what projects were selected in that individual year. So again, the priority needs on the left-hand side, expand and improve public facilities and infrastructure. Again, that's one of our larger two categories of CDBG funding. The second priority, preserve and develop affordable housing, with four subset goals there about increasing affordable housing opportunities. It's also worth noting that CDBG funds cannot be used for new construction of housing, only acquisition or rehabilitation. So as we develop more housing, really, our only source of funds there is the home program. Provided for housing rehabilitation under CDBG or home funds can do that. Provide code enforcement in LMI neighborhoods, as well as slum and blight removal in residential neighborhoods. Again, that's eligible under the CDBG program only. The third priority, public services and quality of life improvements. Generally speaking, this is our 15% set aside for CDBG, where the city funds some internal programs, but also with our nonprofit partners, providing eligible services. And then on that same sort of category, but specific to our HOPWA grant, the fourth priority, housing and supportive services for persons with HIV or AIDS. And a majority of those funds are used for rent, mortgage, or utility assistance, but also some of that for supportive services for those same clients. Finally, as we discussed with our Community Development Committee, the city would like to see continued opportunities for economic opportunities for small businesses or emerging businesses to receive technical assistance or perhaps financial assistance through the county's... Oh, sorry, the city's CDBG program. Again, that's the only category where that is eligible. And then our last priority and corresponding goal is effective program management. The template for this requires that the money that the city sets aside for administrative expenses also goes towards serving a priority and a goal, just sort of a technicality of this HUD's reporting system. So that is our goal, where 20% of our admin funds for CDBG, 10% for home, and up to 3% for HOPWA. I'll show you those budgets momentarily. So here's our annual allocations for this year. These funds have been officially awarded by Congress, and HUD has officially notified the city of these HUD allocations. So just over 1.1 million in CDBG. You can also see that in both the CDBG and home program, the city generates substantial program income. This is revenue generated from years and years of programming where funds are provided as low-cost and sometimes no-interest loans, but they are repayable from typically where we've done homeowner rehab or purchase assistance. And to some extent, we've made payable loans to developers for affordable housing under the home program. So that thought that the city staff had many, many decades ago at this point is generating substantial additional revenue to bolster these programs and, quite frankly, stabilize the expectation that these programs will be around regardless of what happens at the federal level. In the CDBG program this year, we're also reallocating prior-year funds of 954,000. These are likely funds from various projects that were either previously funded and, for whatever reason, either didn't utilize all the funding allocated or, in some cases, didn't come to fruition at all for various feasibility issues. So HUD allows us to reallocate older funding in this process. So a total budget for this year for CDBG of just over 2.7 million. In the home program, we received substantially less funding, 660,000 in our allocation, and nearly equal to that in our program income. So for a budget of 1.2 million in the home program. Both of those programs are strictly limited to the city limits of Columbia and our residents. However, the HOPWA program, the city administers on a regional basis. So 1.9 million here, but it's really for multiple counties and jurisdictions. And the City of Columbia is responsible for managing that across the jurisdictions. So now down to our more specific project funding. From HUD's perspective, a project is considered synonymous with the eligible use categories. So this is the level of budget that they require in the annual action plan. I realize the Community Development Committee and Council may go further to make specific awards to different agencies, and that's certainly a best practice. But for the action plan process, HUD only requires us to allocate at these categories. So then, CDBG admin and planning, 20% for 236,000. Public services, again capped at 15% or 170,000. Then our larger two buckets of funding, public facilities and infrastructure for 930,000. And then the variety of housing rehab programs, primarily around housing rehab or emergency repairs, as well as code enforcement and slum and blight removal, for 1.4 million in the CDBG housing programs. Total budget this year of 2.7 million, again. Now here's down to, more specifically, to the activities and where that Citizen Advisory Group was involved in looking at specific allocations. So now I break this down and won't necessarily read every single one of them to you in the interest of time, but you can see how we've broken down to public services category. These are, again, largely outside agencies, as well as the city's Homeless Services Department. Then the public facilities and infrastructure. This is typically city-owned facilities and infrastructure, but it should be noted that you are allowed to fund nonprofit-owned facilities. You can help them make repairs and improvements to their facilities. And then you can see the housing programs, the down payment assistance program, the rehab program, and admin as well this year. Under our home program, we have far fewer eligible use categories. So we have our 10% for administration. Then we are required to set aside 15% for CHODOs. Those are community housing development organizations or nonprofit affordable housing developers. The city's had ebbs and flows of eligible nonprofits for these funds, but nonetheless, we're required to continue to set aside those funds each year. The balance of the funds, just over 1 million, will be for the balance of home affordable housing development activities. In the HOPWA program, the city's administration for 57,000, and then our outside partners, which the city has been funding, generally speaking, all of these agencies for many years. The Columbia Housing Authority for 721,000. Palmetto AIDS Life Support Services, or PALs, for 496,000. TCM, or the Cooperative Ministry, for 250,000. University of South Carolina Department of Medicine for 358,000. And then the Upper Savannah Care Services for 25,000. And again, that's one of those agencies that serves outside the city limits there. We serve a multi-county jurisdiction for the HOPWA funds. So with that, I'll stop the presentation. But our final submission, if you will, after council's approval, we will be aiming to submit on July 11th. For anyone interested in providing further comment, the Community Development Department's office address and phone number are on the screen. The website where you can find the consolidated plan is also listed, can be found on the Community Development webpage from the city's website. With that, I'll stop the sharing. We're happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, do you have any questions? Or council member, any question in reference to the information that's been provided that incorporate the consolidated plan? And once you chime in and provide us approval, you does give us the permission to move forward to submit it to HUD for approval.
Motion for approval.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to recognize, I don't know if we have any members of the CAC besides Ms. Sierra here.
We actually do.
Yeah, if y'all could just stand up with thank you for your volunteering and your time.
Thank you, Felicia, and the entire team. Mr. Mayor, Council, the consent agenda items are 6 through 18, and we would love to consider your approval.
All right, Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Moving into a public hearing and first reading for zoning, planning matters, deferring item 19 and moving to item 20, a comprehensive plan amendment for the downtown Columbia strategic plan. And Ms. Hampton is here to assist with these items.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Yes, Lucy Cindis-Statler, our planning administrator, will be guiding you through the plan and the design guidelines. But I wanted to first take the opportunity to say thank you to City Council and to administration. When we first started talking about this issue in 2021, we had widely divergent views, perhaps, on where we should be. And after some really great conversations, we ended up where we are, which is a streamlined document that's going to be easier to use and pair well with our unified development ordinance. So thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Ms. Statler.
Good afternoon. Let's see. So I am pleased to be here before you today after the...
So I am pleased to be here before you today after the process that we've been through, which has been a really great process. Let's see, get through that. So this, the first part of the agenda is the comprehensive plan amendment for the downtown Columbia strategic plan. This is a request to adopt the downtown strategic plan as an addendum to the city's comprehensive plan. So just as a little bit of a background, you may remember in February of last year, we kicked off this process with our consultant team, MKSK and Whiten Smith. The purpose of the planning document was twofold. First, to provide a refreshed vision for downtown and update the policy documents to reflect the changes that have happened since the city's center master plan was adopted in 1998 and since the InnoVista plan was adopted in 2007. It was also intended to provide a basis for a new set of design guidelines to replace the older city center and InnoVista design guidelines and to be focused more on the public realm and a little bit less on building materials and details. Oops, got ahead of myself. So we had a robust public engagement process. There were lots of activities. We had stakeholder round tables that included residents, business and property owners, the development community institutions. We had a number of mobile workshops, community open houses, and an online survey. We heard from over 1,100 folks during this process, and it was a lot of fun. What we heard from the community had a lot to do with connectivity, safety for cyclists and pedestrians. We heard about wanting more access to the river, about preserving and enhancing the character of downtown and having more shade trees along our streets. The consultant team gathered the information that they heard and what the community had identified as the biggest opportunities and the biggest challenges, and they distilled that into some identifiable problems to solve, which they condensed into six big ideas, which are the basis of the strategic plan. So quickly, those six ideas, the first one, and they have sort of a tagline for each one, was highlight. And this is to create an urban trail and a linear park that connects downtown's existing destinations and highlights its assets. The second one was refresh, to create a more comfortable downtown environment through the improved tree canopy and green space. And then connect, to focus on safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles at key intersections. Number four was reclaim, and this was reclaim right of way from excessively wide streets for uses that support local businesses, residents, and visitors. And champion, to provide dedicated stewardship of downtown's unique places and resources through a consortium of invested private and public partners. And then finally streamline, which again was one of the goals of this process, to protect downtown's long-term economic competitiveness and real estate value by creating user and business-friendly design guidelines. And then we have a diagram. Dr. Bustles had actually asked us to create this when we were having one of our meetings about the process of the plan and the guidelines to really help illustrate how some of our planning processes and documents and ordinances work together. Because I think a lot of people just in the public are confused about how these things work together. We're always talking about area plans and the comprehensive plan. So we thought that was a great idea, and this is sort of to help sort of understand how those things work together. I know you're familiar with the comprehensive plan, so that is a citywide policy document that is mandated by state law for us to do every 10 years, and then we have a five-year update. And so that's at the top, and those have required elements that are topical like transportation and housing and community facilities and so on. And then underneath that, we have district, area, and corridor plans, and these are more geographical focused. So this could be for a corridor or a district. The downtown strategic plan we're looking at now, of course, falls into this category. This is also a policy document and typically makes recommendations about programs, policies, and different, you know, potentially implementation recommendations. And those are typically put into timeframes like short term, medium, and long term. And they have finer grained recommendations, of course, that are focused on that geographic area. And then implementation tools. Most plans have a recommendation on how to implement plans. So that can include ideas about how to fund certain projects that are recommended through grants or incentives, and also regulatory changes that might help support the plan. So in the context of what we're looking at today, the downtown strategic plan, of course, would be into the area plan, that middle category. And then next up on the agenda is the zoning map amendment and the text amendment that will support that plan. So those are more regulatory documents. Pardon me. So that's kind of the, kind of the big overview of the downtown plan. And then next on the agenda is the zoning map amendment and text amendment. So I don't know if you, if y'all'd like me to just move through that first and then do separate motions? Okay, great. So the next item on the agenda, this is going to be about the text amendment and the zoning map amendment. The request is officially zoning map amendment and text amendment for downtown properties generally bounded by infringing Elmwood Avenue to the north, Pickens Street to the east, Blossom and Gataba Street to the south, and the Congry River to the west. Request to rezone the properties to remove the OVCC, which you know as the city center design overlay district, and the OVID, which is the InnoVista overlay district, and to apply the OVDC, which is the downtown Columbia over district, to amend various sections of the unified development, to remove references to the OVCC and the OVID and associated design guidelines, and to establish the downtown Columbia design overlay district and associated design guidelines. I know that was a mouthful, but, so I'm going to just walk through what that means. First, I just wanted to quickly review the study area on the map. The difference between, so the top diagram represents the study area for the plan. This was based on the two districts that we talked about before, city center and InnoVista. The study area was the same for the planning document. When it got into the regulatory part, the only change to this boundary was to remove the Elmwood and Randolph cemeteries, and those, that just didn't make a whole lot of sense. So we just took that out, but I just wanted to really make that clear. So this is just our standard land use plans that we present when we're looking at zoning changes, all the different land uses that are included in this geographic area. And then the zoning districts, there are about 15 underlying zoning districts. And just to be clear, this process is not changing anything about the underlying zoning in this area. It's just the overlay districts. So the guideline document is set up with five sections. The first section is an introduction and provides some guiding principles, and these were directly from the plan. And they talk about being uniquely Columbia, to create comfortable streets and spaces, to reclaim space for pedestrians, and then connect people and places. So these are just kind of the overlying or underlying principles that the guidelines are based on. And then the section that you're looking at on the right is just an example of a piece out of the guideline document to sort of talk about how they're set up. Each section or subsection has an intent that is clearly stated in a box, and that is just to set up what, you know, what this section is really about. And there's a lot of flexibility included. So, you know, the intent under each section, you know, to provide clear entrances for pedestrians, you know, on the public right of way. And there might be a lot of recommendations about how that could be accomplished. So there is a lot of flexibility within that. And then this is just a snapshot of the different sections. After you get through the introduction, we have site planning, which includes open space, parking facilities, fences and walls. There's the private realm section, which includes development frontages, basic building design, and pedestrian entry. And then the public realm defines four zones that talk about the sidewalk zone, frontage zone, furnishing zone, and parking lane and enhancement zone. And this is basically just looking at how buildings address the public right of way, and it is evaluated based on existing conditions, how much room is there to provide different things, and making recommendations about how that space should be addressed. So quickly to overview the process changes, as I've mentioned, we are combining the areas that were two design overlays into one single overlay for this geographic area. The thresholds, that was another change that we have, are looking at, which we're no longer to have any monetary thresholds. You know, we used to have, if projects were above this certain amount of cost, they would have to go to the DDRC. That is no longer the case. The thresholds we're looking at now are just based on the impact that they are likely to have on the public realm. And so you can see that includes, it could be a gross square footage area of 25,000 square feet or more, if the site is an acre or more, if there's 100 linear feet of street frontage, if a building is 50 feet or taller, or if it includes 26 residential units or more, those, any one of those triggers would consider it a major application, which means it would go to the DDRC. Also, we're proposing, another recommendation from our consultant team was to actually divide the DDRC into two separate commissions, one that looks at our historic districts and landmarks and all the historic preservation guidelines, and then another commission that would look at urban design issues. So this would be, of course, in the urban design category. And since we haven't, we would have to work on what those look like, they would probably be smaller groups of folks. And so the recommendation is to make this effective in January so that we'd have time to put those things together between now and then. And then this is just a summary of the text amendment. Basically, the long and short of it is it would remove the references, of course, to the city center and InnoVista and put those together with the downtown overlay. And it would acknowledge the thresholds that are being proposed. There are a few adjustments to some auto-related uses, just providing distance requirements between auto-related uses like gas stations, auto repair, like they're, you know, not providing them within 1,000 feet of each other. Parking lots would still be allowed as a use, but not as a prime, like as a principal use, so they would need to be associated with a building or a development. And, let's see. And then the setbacks are established, since we have all this information about development frontages, the setbacks have been adjusted to reflect the guidelines as opposed to what's in the zoning ordinance, which is based more on just the underlying zoning district. So that's pretty much it for the text amendment that would also support this planning process and these design guidelines.
For over a year, and it was due, after 20 something years, it was, it was time. And I think the incorporation of the connectivity, the livability that we're looking for, narrowing the streets, the options with the urban trails, the tying into our riverfront, our downtown, now we really focus on those cores, making pedestrian friendly, you know, working with DOT. I want to just give a shout out to Secretary Powell, who has been unbelievable to work with, and really some of the things that have been challenges for us, they're really embracing now with a lot of the feedback. So I wanted to thank the entire planning staff. I know all of y'all, who's all here from planning? Y'all stand up for a minute. Y'all get, y'all got to get a little praise. It's a, it's a lot of work, and I want to thank you. Madam Clerk, this is a public hearing, so before we take a motion, we need to have any public input at this point. Did you have anybody sign up?
No, sir.
Was there anybody here to speak on or against this? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion for item 20. So moved.
May I suggest that the items 20 and 21 be taken together?
Taken together?
Please.
Okay. Could you revise that motion? So moved.
Thank you.
Motion to take items 20 and 21? Any comments? Questions, counsel? If not, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll on that?
Is there a second to Mr. Brown's motion? Thank you.
There is now, I thought there was. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move on to item 22, which is an amendment to the unified development ordinance to add pickup window as an accessory use. We were approached by this use, it was not in the ordinance, and so we have decided this is something that we will see more of. We wanted to protect the neighborhoods while allowing for this new use.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
No one has signed up.
All right. Is there a mo, yes, Mr. Brennan?
Ms. Hampton, just to confirm, no exterior speakers are involved with this. This is strictly pickup windows.
Correct. It's for what we're seeing more of now, where is you order online or through your phone, and you simply drive up, give them your name, so there is no real external impacts to that other than the vehicle coming through.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second. Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 23 is an amendment also to the unified development ordinance to include 900 Calhoun Street as a type three landmark.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against inclusion?
No one has signed up.
All right. Is there a motion? So moved. Got a motion? Second. Got a second twice down at the FRN?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your zoning public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Ordinance's first reading, item 24, ordinance number 2025-053, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement between the City of Columbia and One Columbia for Arts and Culture for 936.55 square feet of office space located at the Enzer Keenan House, 801 Wildwood Avenue.
So moved. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? This is a great use of that space, for sure. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Event resolutions, item 25, resolution number R2025-033, authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at Jubilee Festive of Black History and Culture within the 1900 and 2,000 blocks of Marion Street between Richland Street and Elmwood Avenue and the 1,400 block of Richland Street between Marion Street and Bull Street on Saturday, September 20, 2025.
Is there a motion for this resolution? Got a motion, is there a second? Second. A motion and a second? Any further discussion? Look forward to seeing everybody on the 20th of September. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolutions, item 26, resolution number R2025-025, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between Central Midland's Regional Transit Authority and City of Columbia for fiscal year.
Got a motion and a second? Is there a second, please? Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 27, resolution number R2025-026, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for supportive housing services between the City of Columbia and the University of South Carolina for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Is there a motion? So moved. So moved, is there a second? Second. Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 28, resolution number R2025-027, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for professional services between the City of Columbia and Salvation Army for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Yes. That's our Rapid Shelter.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Hart is here as well, if you want additional details, but that would be for our food services at Rapid Shelter Columbia and the overflow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Reverend McDowell.
Yes, sir. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 29, resolution number R2025-035, certifying building site as an abandoned building pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act Title 12, Chapter 67, Section 1267-100 of the South Carolina Code of Laws as amended regarding property located at 2318 Divine Street in Richland County.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 30, resolution number R2025-036, authorizing the city manager to execute the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Columbia and Richland County for the Williams Street Extension Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Excited about this continuing our riverfront. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 31, resolution number R2025-037, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase-and-sale agreement as well as any necessary closing documents between KB Venture, also known as KB Venture, a South Carolina general partnership, KB, whose joint venture partners are currently Kifer International, a German limited partnership, and Lothar Kifer individually as a citizen of Germany, a German general partnership, Kifer International, and the City of Columbia for the purchase of the southeastern corner of Washington Street and Assembly Street in Richland County.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will say that somebody called me about this today, and I'm not sure that I explained it very well to them, so I'll make sure I do that. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 32, resolution number R2025-042, authorizing the city manager to execute the development contract between, and this is an amendment, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, it should read, between Core Columbia Hampton LLC, Striking CS Acquisition Vehicle LLC, that was the wrong title, Core Columbia Hampton LLC, otherwise known as Core, and the City of Columbia.
Motion for approval. So that's a motion to execute development contract between Core Hampton LLC, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the City of Columbia. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye. Another exciting project coming down the pipe. Very excited. Welcome, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, for all of your consideration today. We now have a period of city council committee reports, referrals, and new business.
Is there any...? Yes, sir. Mr. McDowell?
The Administrative Policy Committee met today and after some discussion would like to put forward the following recommendations. The committee is recommending that the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, which allows contractors and builders to appeal the decision of the city's building officials, to remain separate from the property management, maintenance, I'm sorry, Management Board of Appeals, which was previously considered by city council. In addition, the committee is also recommending the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals be reactivated by moving forward with the, with, moving forward with the appointment of some committee members. The committee is also recommending combining the Minority Business Advisory Council with the Mentor Protege Program, Program Advisory Committee, which, which works with the Office of Business, Office of Business Opportunities, to assist in improving the economic vitality of small businesses in the community. In addition to combining the two, it is recommended that the new combined committee be renamed the Mayor's Small Business Advisory Council. I bring these to you, Mr. Mayor.
These are going to the Admin Committee?
Yeah, from the Admin Committee, yes.
Yep. So you want us to accept these?
Yes.
And we'll move those to the agenda?
Yes, correct.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendations by the Admin Committee?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
No.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Any other committee reports, Mr. Mayor or Counsel?
Does anybody have any other committee reports?
Referrals?
Referrals.
New business?
Ms. Herbert? Did you have something?
I'm talking to Mike.
Oh, okay. Just making sure you were heard.
No other new business either. Okay, thank you so much. Public input. Individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
Mayor, members of council, we have Mr. Timothy Webb.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Glad to see you guys again. If you remember, 28 days ago, we were in front of you requesting a meeting with Councilman Brennan and also Councilman McDowell as it relates to the property that we purchased at 210 William Street. And just to kind of quickly go through a brief timeline of events, we successively closed on this property at 210 William Street in February, applied for the DDRC and Bailey Bill applications in March 17th, received approval April 17th for DDRC and Bailey Bill to find out five days later, on April 22nd, that we could not apply for a permit. Right now, we're currently holding a $316,000 loan for this property that we had approval to design into a duplex property. We are once again requesting a meeting, once again, with you, Mayor, and also council as well, to discuss steps moving forward. As mentioned, this was a $200,000 acquisition with a $316,000 loan, and as you are maybe familiar, we've done tons of redevelopment and development across City of Columbia, MLK, historic preservation, historic neighborhoods, things of that sort. So we simply would like to move forward with preserving this property in Granby as well.
I thought we had something for next week.
A meeting has temporarily, tentatively been scheduled for Monday?
Monday works for us if we can make that happen, but however, I would love to have Mayor and others present as well.
I'm open.
Yeah, I can do Monday afternoon. I thought we had it set for the 24th or the 25th.
The 24th.
That's Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday, yes.
Okay, so...
No, 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 no. It was set for 23rd.
Tuesday. Yeah. Yeah. Because I know I'm traveling on Monday, and I wanted, I wanted to make sure I was here, because I think we exchanged some text messages. I'll be back Monday late afternoon, but Tuesday makes more sense so that we're all there.
Okay, perfect.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. We'll see you there.
Can you connect with Ms. Milton right there to nail down the time to make sure that's taken care of?
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you guys so much.
No, thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak.
All right. Can I entertain a motion?